Thank you, Jacob. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the November 8th Council briefing slash discussion. This tonight is really following the guidelines that we set out for wanting to have a pre-discussion on board vacancies, board appointments, and the candidate interviews that were held over the last several weeks prior to items being brought back to you in the month of December for formal action. So with that being said, I'm going to turn the reins of this over to the mayor, who will spearhead a discussion with council, and we'll see if there's any guidance or direction that you give us coming out of tonight's conversation.
Thanks, Mike. And just advanced warning, I have all the dogs here tonight. So hopefully, I've put food down for them, so hopefully they'll be quiet. But if I disappear into a back bedroom, that's what's happening. But I wanted to start off by saying, by thanking staff in the clerk's office, Jody Lynn and Sherry in particular for helping us continue to refine this process. I think we've come a long way, and I think we're really close. So hopefully, we'll see how things go today. But hopefully, we kind of have set a standard for how we handle these interviews. I wanted to start off by just getting some, and I don't have a really strict agenda for this meeting, but wanted to start off by getting some feedback on the process in terms of, do you guys feel like you have the information that you needed? Did you like the process of the Zoom meetings? I think from my perspective, I could say I want to refine those interview questions a little bit more so that we draw out a little better information and not, you know, be too repetitive with the questions. But just want to throw it open, and I see a hand from Mr. Jensen.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what you said. Some of those questions seemed a little redundant, and maybe we could revisit the questions. I like the amount of questions that we had, nice and truncated, just get right to the point and ask, you know, five, six, seven questions. But a couple of them seemed kind of repetitive, and I think we could tweak those just a little bit as far as the process. The rest of it, I thought was good. I liked the Zoom. I liked the way it was held to just a few minutes. So all in all, I thought it was a really good process.
Thank you. Fernando?
Likewise, Mayor. I just, I agree. And I think moving forward, I think this is such a great way or a great process, especially to, especially since we're going to appoint individuals to the board. I think it's plenty of time, plenty of information. And I think this is great, and hopefully, we can continue this even way after we are gone from office.
Thank you. Any other comments? I did want to just...
Chris, I don't know in the application process, if we can somehow let them know that, hey, there is, if you want to learn about these boards separately and learn what they do, so people don't come in ill-prepared. But also, you want the people that are interested enough in it to already do that research. But also, I don't see if there's anything wrong with saying, hey, guys, do your homework, you know? There's information out there, especially like a lot of these boards. It's, you might not know what they, exactly what they do, but you know, there's some information out there that, I don't want to waste people's time coming in unprepared or waste our time.
So I'm glad you brought that up because after the first day of interviews, I did reach out to the clerk's office to confirm they do send the committee job description. So everyone has that. Everyone receives the exact same amount of information. And I will tell you that in my consideration of each of the candidates, I weighed that heavily. If they are not going to, they can sit on their couch and watch every single one of our meetings. They can review every meeting packet, every set of minutes for years. And if they're not going to do that much work for the interview process, then, you know, you think that's when they would be putting their best foot forward. Once they get on the board, you know how much work is involved and how much reading and advanced research is done. So I can tell you that anybody that did not have a knowledge of what the board was, I am not considering them. So that's my own personal approach to it. But I know how much advanced work it takes, and this is all out there. Sandy?
Yeah, I ditto what you're saying, Mayor. I totally agree because, yeah, the clerk, I think the clerk's office does a great job of providing information. And I feel the same way because they're, they need to be putting the time in to these boards. And if they're not prepared, if they're not preparing for the interview to even know what the board does, that doesn't really give me a good feeling for how they're going to, you know, how they're going to prepare for the service on the board. So I, I'm in the same, I'm in the same, on the same page with you as well. And I think what we give them is sufficient, and I think that that's, well, I would say it's more than sufficient. And I would, I would hope that that helps us to find out who's going to do the work and who's not going to do the work. And I think, I don't know, we had talked about maybe asking a question as to whether they have attended any of the meetings. I don't know if that's anything we want to include in our questions when we tweak, but just wanted to put that out there because that came up in one of our discussions during the interviews.
And I want to add the caveat to my comment that I completely respect and commend people who want to get more involved in their city. So I, you know, don't want to dissuade people from doing that. I just hope that they would put a little more effort in the front end. And I felt like a lot of people were asking us what we wanted them to do, and it really should be much more of a two-way street than that. And I think, I was thinking about that question in particular, Sandy, and I think we can probably meld that in and ask it in a, in a way that's not, have you ever been to, you know, not a yes or no question, maybe more of an open-ended question. Fernando?
Yes, Corey took the comments out of my mouth. I forgot I was going to talk about that as well. And I think it's important if people want to, obviously, it's commendable when people want to volunteer and help their city out. But if they don't know what the board is designed to do and how important it is, then it's kind of like a big red flag or something, you know? And I know we talked about it a while ago, not to get off subject, but I know we talked about maybe having a citizen academy, and maybe that's something that could be added on to teach the citizens, hey, we have these boards, this is what, this is the boards, what they do, and how they operate, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that would be a good throwing point for that if we ever get to that point.
That's a great point, Fernando. Dan?
One other point, Sandy helped me remember this. In one of the interviews of a current standing member, she brought up the point that there was information on our website that wasn't readily accessible, or it was made for the public and for board members, but somehow, the message wasn't getting delivered out as well. So we might want to look at that.
I think it was Margot Mooreing when she was talking about defining. Yeah, okay, so that's probably a note for our city attorney.
Yeah, that's the information about public hearings that Georgette had requested. And so, I think, yeah, I think we just need to, maybe Heather or Christian needs to make sure that the board members know about that information because I would think that that applies to both the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission.
One other comment that was on, from two of the returning applicants, was about the, they're no longer getting paper packets, and they talked about the amount of paper it takes to print. I don't know if we can move them digital, but that's just some feedback that we heard from them. So obviously, we've switched all the way over to iPads as a council, but I don't know where the boards are in terms of dropping the paper. So Fernando?
Yes, I remember that now. I know, obviously, we have iPads now. But is there a way that the board members could bring their own laptop or iPad and use that information like that? And I know they spend their own money printing all these documents. And if there's important documents, they could print that individually and take notes, which I have done before for the library board, since we still use a ton of paper on that. That was just something that I was thinking about when they brought it up about them going paperless.
Sandy?
Maybe somebody can enlighten us on what the plan is because, yeah, that was a little concerning to me, too, to hear that we stopped giving board members packets. And I guess my question is, do we have a plan to help them, you know, get the information or have the information electronically so that they're not printing it out? Because that, I mean, I think the whole purpose of stopping the delivery of the packets was to stop the wasting of paper. So I don't know, does anybody, I mean, was there a plan to provide something to these board members or what?
I don't, I don't want to put staff on the spot. Is anybody prepared to answer that question? Or can you just take it as feedback from the interview process?
I was just about to say that I know that we've got Heather and Sherry on the line, but I'm not sure we're prepared to answer that. We can get you some information going forward unless either Heather or Sherry wants to address it.
Heather can go ahead since she's on.
I'll go. Hi, everybody. So when we send out the email to our board members in advance of each meeting, we have been letting them know, hey, we've gone digital now. But if you would like a paper agenda packet, please let us know, and we'll have a printed copy at the front counter for you. So I'm pretty sure we're still doing that. I know we have several board members that prefer papers. So until they're given devices, if that's a future option, we'll continue to offer them paper packets at pickup at City Hall.
Thank you, Heather. Or the mashup name that I think Mike just invented of Sherry and Heather, that was Harry. Dan?
I can only speak for the Board of Adjustments. There was a tremendous amount of paperwork that went into each packet. I do like the fact that when we were going on case by case, that a lot of it was provided on the overhead projector. So, I mean, I'm all for a paperless avenue and saving us the money when it comes to that. And perhaps that just means a little bit more education for our board members. But if we're going to print them out upon request, then maybe they can, maybe it can be sitting on the diocese for whenever their, whenever their board comes up, whenever their meeting comes up. But I'm for moving towards paperless.
Georgette?
Thank you. I'm towards moving towards, I'm for going paperless. However, I also don't want the expense to fall on our volunteers. I think opting out would be better than opting in. It's just easier on the volunteers. Another concern I would have is if it's on the day, it's for on the day of the meeting, and they don't have the, what they need. You have to go through all that information usually on the weekend. And if they don't have that information beforehand, or they're trying to do it on their phone, it ends up being a little bit more problematic. So I would suggest just polling each one, saying, do you prefer printed? Or are you okay with electronic? And if they want the printed one, is it possible for us to do what we did before and have one of the city people just plop it off at the different addresses? Again, to take some of the onus off of the volunteers. We're asking them to do a lot. And having to get down to Town Hall, City Hall during working hours, it can be problematic for some, especially since they're, most of them are on boards that meet in the evening.
Thank you. Any other feedback as far as process goes? Dan?
Just one last thing in reference to what we're talking about. I, maybe we can even set a sunset for the paper, you know, like in three years, that everybody, or four years, that we plan on phasing it out so we can kind of set the tone going forward. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so since this is a briefing, we can't take a vote. But what I want to do now is start working through the reappointments and the openings that we have to try to kind of narrow things down so that at the board meeting where we'll be considering this, we can have just kind of a slate presented. We might have more than one person for each position that we want to take a vote on, and that's fine. But again, this is the first time we've done this. Every time, I think we voted on board members at the meetings, we've done it differently. So I really want to get into a consistent process. So bear with each other as we go through this. But I thought the easiest thing to do would be to start with the expiring terms of current board members and to see if anybody has any desire to make any replacements. And so we'll start with the Board of Adjustment. We have John Moreland, Frances Reddington, and Don, I'm sorry, Dan Amala, who are all, their terms are ending. They've all been, Dan's really new. The other two are about three years in. They all interviewed, and I think they all had an interest in continuing on. Does anybody have any concerns or thoughts there? Sandy?
I just went and I looked at the makeup of our Board of Adjustment, and it looks like we have three members who have been appointed since 2020. So that's, you know, a couple of, well, a couple of years at the most. And Mr. Amala was five months, I believe he said. So that leaves us with four, four who have been there a little bit longer. And just my thinking is that I would, I would be cautious about bringing additional new ones in because if we had four new ones and three older ones, you know, I don't know. I don't know if that's really a smart thing to do at this point. I will say that I would support reappointing the three that we have, particularly Mr. Moreland. You know, I watch a lot of the Board of Adjustment meetings, and he, he's someone who has been very reasonable. He really, he understands the code and the rules. And so, you know, I know he's been on the board for quite a while, but I also think that he's provided a lot of leadership to the board. So I'm leaning towards reappointing him, even though he has been on the board for quite a while.
Thank you, Dan.
I support the reappointments as well. I like the experience. I've worked with every, all of them except for Dan. He's only been there for five months. And so I think, I think Sandy's spot on that the intrinsic knowledge that they bring to the table is very good for the board.
Thank you, Chat.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with anybody. Just, I was able to watch the makeup ones, and I did like what Frank Reddington had to say about, you know, that some of the, you know, he believes that maybe, and he's been on there for eight years and believes that, you know, there may be needing to be term limits on some of the board appointments, whether they're full-fledged term limits or just, you know, a long time. And to his point that, he said, you know, members become stale, and the people who come before the board know how they're going to vote. And like I said, he's been on there eight years, and he's saying that. So it's not like, you know, Dan, who'd been on there for five months, is saying there needs to be term limits. So I, I don't have a problem with any of these reappointments, but I just, I thought that was a very good take from somebody who's been on the board for eight years, saying that, you know, that, you know, maybe, maybe people get stale being on the same board. And, you know, if he's been on it for eight years and sees it, then there might be some validity instead of somebody that's only been there for a month and saying that. So don't have a problem with any reappointments, but I just, I like that little quip that I, from him today.
Well, and we don't formally have term limits, but we certainly have the opportunity to end anyone's term, and that time is right now. So, but you're, you're saying you do support the three reappointments. So I think that that is a valid item to watch out for among our board members. And I think we also need to empower them to know, you know, if they're, they need to move on or maybe switch to another board for a different experience. So it seems like there's a little bit of a consensus to go ahead and move forward with the three Board of Adjustment. Okay, Planning Commission, Margot Mooreing. She is a planner herself, and I can't believe that she's retiring. But I'm glad that she's interested in continuing her service. Does anybody have any concerns or comments about reappointing Margot? Corey?
I'd be for reappointment. She's done a good job. She has a very good level of understanding, and I would support reappointment for her.
Sandy?
Yeah, same thing that Corey said, I would support as well.
Okay, any concerns with reappointment? Great. Pension Board, Brandon Maresma, any concerns? All right, Georgia?
I don't have a concern with him per se. He does a fine job. I did not know that he didn't live in Jack's Beach. And that is something that we might want to think about a little bit. I know he doesn't have to, but we do have a couple strong candidates who want to sit on the pension board who have applied. And I'm looking specifically at either Sunny or Lance, especially Lance. He has a lot of, a lot to offer that. So that's something that we might want to think about. Do you want to have more, do you want to have the people on the pension board live in the city? Like I said, Brandon's been doing a fine job, but he even noted he doesn't mind stepping back. He's got a busy life. So it's just something we might want to think about.
You might want to think about it when? Wouldn't now be the time?
I don't want to skirt doing a vote.
Well, I mean, if we...
So I think that, you know, if there's support for him, that's fine. But then there, like I said, there's like Lance Heish, is that how you say it?
Let me grab, Sherry's got her hand up.
How is it? What is it?
Huish.
Huish. He was very interested in pension, as was Sunny Wilkinson.
Sherry?
I did want to say that Brandon is the fifth member of the pension board, and he is on tomorrow's agenda for the pension members to reelect. So he would be coming before the council as a ministerial act of approving him.
So in other words, it's pretty much a done deal?
It's that he's on for tomorrow's pension agenda, his reappointment.
So I have a question. How would the people on the pension board know who else is also applying if they only know the one that's already serving with them?
Dustin requested a copy of all the applications of those who had requests, who had pension as one of their choices. So those were provided to Dustin.
All right, and does then Dustin share their interviews with the pension board so they can make an informed decision?
I, that I don't know. I don't, I know, I believe the applications are part of the agenda package. I do not know about the interviews.
Is it possible to postpone the, that vote for, till the next meeting? So this way, we can just give them the information that they'll need?
His term will expire before the next meeting.
Well, this is a conundrum.
Yeah, this is, darn, I thought this would be such an easy meeting. Um, because this, this takes the city council out of the process. Why are we even interviewing pension board applicants if it's just going through, straight to the pension board to approve? This is kind of how it used to be, where they just, staff just sent us one name and said, approve this one. And that's, because I, I mean, I reviewed the package. We didn't get the applications for the other. I mean, obviously, I've seen the applications, but the other pension board members haven't.
And I'm taking it that's only for the fifth member. The rest of them, we do. And the fifth member is the one that the, the board votes on. So it's that fifth member that's problem, and that fifth member is always the fifth member. So that, I think, is a, there's a problem in the process.
Yeah.
Is it in the charter? No?
It may be in the pension board charter, it's not in the city charter, I believe.
It's in the definitions in the, in the Code of Ordinance that talks about the pension benefits. It spells out how the members are selected.
But it doesn't spell out the process of, I can understand the board voting on their own, but how does the board know who wants to be on there and the interview? So that's, that's where there's a disconnect.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw my comment of, why don't we just do it now? And, and say, let's let Sherry talk to Dustin and figure out what the process is. Is anybody going to have heartache about going forward with the vote for the pension board tomorrow? And just going ahead and, Brandon is the Chair of the General Employees Pension Fund, or Pension Board. So I would hate to go with, with a gap without someone in that place. And then we just, this is, we've, we've found a little hole in our process, and we'll get this fixed in the next couple of months. Any objections? Sherry, your hand's still up?
Sorry.
Okay, feel free to talk. Okay, so we'll just leave well enough alone and work on that little portion and get that fixed. So as far as everybody, reappointment looks good. The vacancies that we have are two alternates. We have an alternate on the Board of Adjustment and an alternate on the Planning Commission. I just wanted to kind of throw it open and see if anybody had any top candidates. Let's start with the Board of Adjustment because they had fewer applicants for that. And I was going, I'll, I'll throw it out, that my top two were, I didn't write their last names down, Todd and Chris. Todd Smith, and then Peter Chris Schroder. Dan?
Yeah, I like Chris.
Sandy?
Yeah.
And we're not, I'm sorry, when we're not taking a vote, we're just throwing out our top one.
Yeah, those were my top two as well.
Okay. Did anybody else have any, any thoughts?
I'd like Peter Chris as well.
Anybody else? So are we comfortable having both names and then taking it to a vote for the council? Okay. And then for Planning Commission, my top two were Nicholas and Heather. Anybody else have any thoughts on their tops?
My top two were Emily Stouffer and Heather as well.
Sandy?
My top two were Shandy Thompson and Nicholas Andrews.
Dan?
I'm in line with Fernando. Mine were Heather and Emily.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I like Heather and Emily as well.
So just from that, we have the two people that kind of appeared more than once in that were Heather, Heather, Nicholas, and Emily. Do we want to narrow it down or take all three to council?
Just take all three.
Does anybody else want to weigh in? If they had preferences beyond Nicholas, Heather, or Emily? Okay, any other thoughts? Staff, any clarification needed, concerns?
Not unless Sherry or Heather have any questions on what we just went through. I'm going to presume, no, otherwise we'd see their pictures.
Which Sherry just popped up and spoke too soon.
Mike, I just clarify, currently, it is planned to go before the council at the December 20th council meeting, unless you want it moved to the December 7th meeting.
Counsel, would you rather it on the 7th?
I mean, if we're ready.
I'm not sure if you'll all be there on the 20th. So if we can put it on for the 7th, would that work better?
Seventh it is.
Okay. Thank you. So I would just say, you know, between now and the 7th, if you didn't have a chance to watch the interviews or look at the applications, for those, we're really only looking at five candidates now versus, I think, the 25 that we have on the list. So just please take a look at those and make... at those and make sure you're ready to go in terms of selecting those members. And we know, you know, past history would tell that alternates generally will work their, their way up into regular positions, you know, within a few years. So, Chat?
Yeah, two questions real quick. Could you go back through, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure how the meeting was going to go. So I was trying to flip through all the notes while you were naming off the, the final two or three for the PC and BOA?
So the BOA were Todd and Chris, and the PC were Nicholas, Heather, and Emily. And I'm just going by the ones that appeared most, most commonly in everyone's comments.
And second question, just because I was, I was flipping through, does, does John Moreland's term expire this, this year? Because I was looking through my notes, and I remember him mentioning that he was hoping Lexi Gonzalez would be ready to chair. And I just didn't know if he was, you know, if he was wanting to continue on, or if he was, if he had indicated that he was stepping down. Because I, it was, I was a little confused there at the end of that. So I just didn't know if anybody had any insight, you know, and into that.
But, oh, go ahead, Sandy. My understanding was that he said that this year he was the Chair, but that he was hoping that Alexi would be the Chair next year, that he agreed to take, that he has held the Chair position several times, and he agreed to take it so that Alexi could have another year to get her feet under her. And then his hope was that she would take Chair next year because he's, he's trying to groom some people to, some other people to take the Chair position.
Okay, I appreciate that. I didn't know if he was saying that because he was like, hey, I'm ready to retire, like, take the Chair or what? You know how that could be. So.
A Chair grooming his successor is the dream of any board. Sandy?
Just in follow-up to your comment, Mayor, you had said something about if we want to watch the interviews again before the December 7th meeting. Just wanted to confirm with Sherry that we would have access to those up until December 7th. Because I, I couldn't remember if there was an expiration on, on our access or not. So.
I, that, those videos will be available at that link until the end of the year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other hands. And I think that, was this the only item on the agenda?
It was the only item on the agenda. We didn't know how long it was going to take. We want to give you as much time as was necessary to go through the process and/or applications. So we're done for the night.
All right. Now we'll just have to figure out how to bring three candidates smoothly for a vote. Georgette?
I was at a friend's house on this past weekend, and I've heard all, all the, that there's a list of complaints. But the one that I wanted to note on the, at this briefing is the council, I don't think we need to go through council for this, but the Airbnbs, when people are renting them, they're hanging out on the dunes. They're just walking out because they're, these are oceanfront homes that are now being rented and they're on the dunes. And I don't know if we have any kind of request that they have information for whomever's renting from them, saying you can't walk on the dunes, you know, be respectful and all that kind of stuff. Does anybody know if we have that included in there? I know we have other things.
I don't think it's included. I know I've seen some of the Airbnbs, Airbnb's lists of certain, certain things they cannot do, but I didn't, I haven't seen any of, on the oceanfront properties, their list to say, don't get on the dunes or anything, or anything like that.
Okay. Can staff look into that a little bit?
Yeah, we, we do not have that. That's part of a longer-term visitor communication strategy, which is one of our strategic planning elements, to push information to tourists that come into our community.
Those are the known tourists. There's, there was also a robust conversation as to whether these are actually above-board Airbnbs, or is it just being rented out?
Are, are you finished with your comments? Okay, Dan?
Yes. Would this be the appropriate time to bring up matters for maybe further down the road for consideration? Are we doing that tonight?
Not sure how far we can go in items that aren't noticed. Mike?
Good question. I don't have a copy for tonight's briefing in front of me, so I'm not sure if that was on the list.
Get only mentioned, I don't have it in front of me either, but I think it-
I'll save it for, for a further briefing, further down the road.
Okay, thank you. Or you can also pass it on to Mike. Cory?
And just because Georgette brought it up, I love the surf competitions and stuff, and I know there was a very, the King Tide and everything with the Nor'easter, everything was crazy. But a lot of people, there were a lot of people in the dunes for the surf contests. And just want to make sure that, you know, we let them know that they reiterate to the people that, hey, the dunes are not a place, not the best, not the place to be. Either, you know, get down on the beach. But I mean, they're all roped off and they're all inside the roped area. They're in the dunes, which, you know, let's just, for the next, for next week and stuff, let's just make sure that, that they're getting that message out to the people coming to their, to their events. Thank you.
Chat?
Well, I just wanted to put a light note out there that I really like Georgette's hat, embracing the beach life. So we talked about it during the meetings, and I just wanted to give a kudos to the hat. It's, I like that, the beach life with the Chair. Very cool. Hopefully, hopefully our hat chair will, will get us all on the order form next time.
No, Georgette has ordered some. Actually, Georgette, you should tell the rest of the council about it.
You're muted.
Trying to get my little mouse over there. Yeah, I ordered them. They're, they have some in gray, some in teal. They're embroidered. Front has the beach life with the hat, with the Chair, and then the back has Jack's Beach 32250. I haven't figured out the, the cost. I'll, I'll, I'll take the cost of the artwork and such. I drew that chair. But it would just be the cost of the hat and the dual embroidery.
Thank you for heading that up. They look awesome.
They're very cool.
Thank you.
Fernando?
Yes, I was gonna piggyback on what Cory was saying. I know we've had a couple surf contests in front of the rec, and I've heard people get on the megaphone and tell, yes, to stay off the dune. So I was like, really happy about it because I was about to go outside and tell them, hey, you can't be in the dunes. But they beat me to the punch. And then, since we're talking about the beach life, I was talking to one of my friends from Strata, and I'm getting more shirts made for the board. And I actually thought about this on Friday of adding the beach life hashtag. Are businesses allowed to use that? Or is it only for the city? I just didn't want to step on any toes.
The, the only thing that I'm aware of that we have a copyright on right now is the logo, the one that's currently on the water towers.
Okay.
To check with planning and development to see if we have copyrights on any other language or verbiage at this point.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, from a branding perspective, I mean, should we as a council talk about, you know, how certain things are used, like that hashtag or?
We'll be bringing an item after the first of the year to talk about community branding.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, well, after this big storm, there's piles of palm fronds everywhere. We'll see how waste management does. Hopefully, hopefully they'll do well. But I'm sure we'll hear about it. Anything else for the greater good? Anything else, Mike, or staff?
I think, I think we're good to go. Everyone have a great Veterans Day on Thursday.
Night. Oh, sorry.
Go Jets!
And we'll, we'll see you all at the regular council meeting, six o'clock in the council chambers.
And I, I did thank the staff for their support during this process, but I want to thank all of you guys, too. We had the majority of council on all of the, almost all of those interviews. And there were a lot of them. We had three and a half days worth of interviews. It felt like, so I really appreciate you guys taking the time. I know having it on Zoom really helps. But it's the more of us that can actually see the candidates and ask them questions and get a feel for their, their styles and experiences, the better. So I really appreciate you guys taking your time out of your day to do that. So have a great week, and we will see you in person next week.